At this time we'll have our invocation by Reverend Dan Phillips, Associate Minister at Francis Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance led by Jacoby Dash. Will everyone please stand?
Mr. President. Father, we are here tonight in a very special room in a very special place because this is the place of government. And Father, we know from your word that you have ordained order and you have ordained governments and you have called on all of your people to pray for all of our leaders. And so, Father, tonight as this meeting gets started, we do take time and we pray for those that this city has elected into this position, for the trust that this city has placed in these leaders. But Father, we also pray for the trust that these leaders have blessed and placed in each one of themselves on this dais. Father, may this meeting that has begun in order continue to be in order. May the things discussed and presented and enacted and done here be done knowing first of all that you observe and that you see, but they may also be done, Father, so that the best for this community can be done with the best that we have. And Father, we're very careful to thank you for all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both Pastor Dan and Jacoby. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Foreman?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
And Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Excuse me, Commissioner McCaskill?
Make way.
At this time we'll have, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from both the October 26th meeting and the December 4th meeting? Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Two more on the floor. Second on the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now moving to our public recognitions, public recognitions and presentations. First up, this is Mr. Terry Haddaway, Georgia Pacific. If you could come up at this time.
Excuse me, Mayor Good. On the, half of the employees for the city of Palacka as well as employees for the Black Police Department, we went through a tough time through Hurricane Irma and through that time we were given guidance from not only the City Commission, but our mayor. The mayor was there during the times, late at night when we were in the command post and was also up again with us when we went to ELC. So we wanted to present him with the flag that flew over the police department during the time of Irma and give him a thank you for his leadership during that time. And it reads, to Mayor Hill, from your family at the Black Police Department, this flag was flown over the Black Police Department during Hurricane Irma September 2017.
Wow. That's not on the agenda. But I mean, it's our pleasure. I think this commission as a whole, our staff, everyone throughout this storm, and this, you know, this award is definitely not for me, it's for our, it's for our entire community. I think we banded together during one of the toughest times and this community is truly able to weather the storm. There are still some inconveniences that are out there, but I can tell you, I called on the commission at a moment's notice and we went out and we served communities that weren't even in the city limits. We went out and served at FED and did wellness checks for over 2,000 people in one evening along with everyone from the city, the county, the fire department, the police department, the public works, all over, just people who are truly interested in making sure that they were good neighbors and that they loved each other. And that's what Palacka is all about. And so, this will forever be remembered just because it symbolizes the unity that we want in our community. And so, again, I thank you for this.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, staff of the city of Palacka, I have a very pleasant part of my job to perform this evening. It's one of, one of my duties to manage the contributions budget for the Georgia Pacific Palacka Mill, probably about 100, somewhere usually each year between 175,000 and 185,000 dollars that we earmark for, for various programs in the community. And one of them that is always very important to us is the, one thing that's always extremely important to us is, is our first responders. And we have had to call on the Palacka Fire Department on a number of times this year. That's fires and smoky situations, smoldering situations that could become fires, they're not something that we deal with daily, but they're something that we take very, very seriously in our operations and because they can get out of hand very quickly and we need a good, strong, qualified, responsive fire department very nearby that can come out and help our operators and our engineers and managers. And that's what we found in the Palacka Police, Palacka Fire Department. So this evening, it is my pleasure to present to Chief JR, Chief Grimes, the, a Georgia Pacific check in the amount of $2,000 for the Palacka Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. Haddaway. It's always a great pleasure working with the people at Georgia Pacific. We can go out there at any time and there's always people there willing to lend us a hand. We train very well with all of their teams, their teams have reached out for us. We're basically one big team now because as us as one department can't handle it all. So we rely on them when we get out there for them to help. And this is going to be one of those things that helps us as a token to get our equipment to where it needs to be if we're replaced and doing training. We train their special operations team every quarter. The way their shifts work, we do it with them two times every quarter, train their teams. We also run out there on a regular basis for fires and this is just a way for us to keep them thriving. We appreciate everything George Pacific does for us. If we ever need anything out of the community, we can always send off him as a partner. So thank you, Mr. Haddaway, for everything you've got to do for us.
Thank you. Anyhow, guys, we just, we thank you for the work that you do. This fire department does more than most people will ever know. They've helped us with our parks. They have, aside from doing their normal work, the Fire Department's Union, the workers are continuously involved in the community and we never get an opportunity to say thank you enough. From our Black and Pride cleanup song to fire safety, we, we just appreciate everything that you guys do and we definitely, we definitely thank you. And we thank our partner, Georgia Pacific, again, just for being a great citizen within this community, a great community partner and always being involved. So thank you. If you guys can hang around when we take our break briefly so we can get some photos, we definitely appreciate it. Next up, Student of the Month. We're going to cancel it and move to next month. So I've got the honor this month of having Commissioner Campbell with me, but I also want to have an honorary assistant for Commissioner Campbell, a young man who helped us with the pledge today, Jacoby, could you come up forth? And so, I bring Jacoby up really because this is befitting that he's here today. Jacoby's a scholar athlete who plays baseball over at Flagler College, but not only is he a great athlete, comes from a tremendous family, we've got Chayla and Melvin Dashar. But Jacoby's a great student. He's an honor student, he's an honor graduate, and he exemplifies what we look for out of our young people in Palacka. And we're proud of you, we're proud of what you do in this community and we also want to say happy birthday. Commissioner Campbell looks for an opportunity so that he can actually pass on this, this stone of honor to you, Jacoby. So Father, what we're going to ask you to do is you're going to help me pass out the certificates to the students as they come. We're going to call the student's name from each school, ask that the representative from the school accompany the student up. And as they do that, we'll form around the front of the room. After we finish, we will actually take photos, we'll take a break, we'll take photos so family members can come in, you can take pictures with whomever you choose, and then we will go from there, we'll line up a single file line and we'll make sure we get a photograph of the newspaper as well. Nick's going to grace us with that today. But before we get started, two special groups of people that we always want to say thank you to. And the first group is our educators. Our educators are fixed all across the back of these hallways. See Coach Hestram out there? And, but we never get a chance to say thank you enough to our educators for the sacrifices that they make. It's often times a thankless job, but without your commitment to our young people, you sometimes see these kids more than their parents do. And we definitely appreciate you for being surrogates, we appreciate you for the work that you do and we want to say thank you to all our educators. So if you would just raise your hands and give them a round of applause. Next up, we'd like all the family members, friends, neighbors that have come to these young people to stand up at this time. It truly takes a village to raise a child without your efforts, without your examples, without you providing them with the moral character and the gold and the fiber to, to go to school every day, to pay attention, to be good citizens, to be good students. This wouldn't be possible. And so, we definitely applaud you for being a part of these young people's life and inspiring them to realize that education is the key to success and that they have to be great stewards. And so, again, thank you. Next up, we'll have our Student of the Month and we'll read the names out as follows. From Brown and Pierce Elementary, Jennifer Sanchez. We're going to stay here, we're going to ask you guys to stay up front until we finish.
Go with your representative.
Jennifer. From Seal Over Turf Junior Sixth Grade Center, Kamaya Hall. From Children's Reading Center Charter School, Kendall Wilkinson. Congratulations. From EH Miller, Justin Rollinson. From James Daylong Elementary, Alex Tillman. From Jenkins Middle School, Reginald Wiggins. $2 fine if you don't smile. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Dante, Danteja Wiggins.
Was that the right name?
They got, we're going to correct it, Dantejas Shazis. We'll get it correct. From Mellon Elementary, Lucas Bergen. From Mosley Elementary, Isaiah Goins. You're not Isaiah. From Palacka High School, Akivia Waters, is that correct? From Pennant Baptist Academy, Gabriel Tarran. From Putnam Edge High School, Tyler Christian. And last but not least, from Palacka Academy of Arts and Sciences, Chloe Dashar. So congratulations, we will correct your name, but congratulations again for being selected as Student of the Month. I'll leave you with something that I always leave our students with and something that I learned when I was in the third grade, many, 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 many years ago. And we open every day up, Commissioner McCaskill can tell you, our saying was simply, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." You guys are truly somebody. Don't let anybody tell you that you can't do anything that you set your heart on. Continue to be great in school, continue to be great in your community, and we look forward to you standing up and leading this community in the future. Again, thank you and we are so proud of you. At this time, we want to give you one last round of applause for the awesome job. And at this time, we're going to take a brief recess so that we can take pictures, we're going to ask our students and Jacoby to stand up here. We're going to, we're going to stay, we're going to take a picture together with all the students so that, for the newspaper, and then we're going to let parents, you can take pictures as soon as we finish with the newspaper's photo and we're going to proceed from there, okay? We'll stand in recess. And also, our, all our recipients, the fire department, we're going to do those awards and follow up by that, we'll be, Mr. Jim Troyano will return.
Oh, have whatever you want. The mayor used to have better candidates than I go take.
Okay, this is what we're going to do. Everybody, all of you. You guys, in the front row, if you want, you guys, just make a little bit of a play for, for me.
Oh, yes, sir.
Everything on our case, just slide you around. Take each other alive, you're going to turn around, step back for me a little bit, make my line. Boy, you're going to sit here, you're a little tall for this group. Step back a little bit, step back, step back, step back. You can each other in here, coming together a little closer, it's like we know each other, come up. We're going to stay here, between this group, you can slide over just a little bit to the right.
Under the heading of good news, certainly hard to follow the young people and their accomplishments, but this will certainly help the city of Palacka. On Tuesday, our governing board had an opportunity to review any applications for ready cost share. That's a maximum of $500,000 that we would be able to provide to applicants. Our governing board, after listening to the mayor, Mandy Tucker, speak, as well as other members that were there to speak from other applicants, their applications, our governing board voted and will be presenting in the next couple of weeks to you a check in the amount of $500,000 for your Phase A portable water project here in the city of Palacka. Look, congratulations to you. And Mr. Mayor, Mandy, Mandy did a great job at the podium. She did an excellent job, so congratulations on an excellent application. Again, continued money coming back to the city to help with your projects. Would you like to say anything at all? That I'll be back in a couple of weeks to present you a check?
Yes, yeah, I'll have something prepared to say then.
Very good.
Thank you very much, as always, for the opportunity.
And to add to it, that on January the 5th, our district-wide cost share will open. Now, last year, we had a maximum of $2 million per project. This year, we haven't determined the actual amount yet, but it will be a significant amount of money. I've spoken with Jonathan already and I know that you all be looking at a couple of projects. And again, our staff, Dr. Shortell has made it very clear that she wants our staff to be prepared to help any of the staff throughout our 18 counties. And being very close here, it's just a hop, skip and a jump or a quick phone call, but your applications have been excellent and our cost share team has been very, they've liked what you have done, so they've been very impressed. So that's one thing I have to say. And the second thing is on the, under the heading of saving water. How would you like to help us and members of our, citizens of our district save a billion gallons of water? Well, we just recently kicked off a program that it's called Skip a Week, and that's an opportunity for residential irrigation, commercial irrigation, anybody that can skip a week during irrigation, I'm sorry, during the calendar month for December, January and February. And helping us through there, we know based on statistics that we can save 1 billion gallons of water, and that's a lot of water to save. So it's a joint effort with the Southwest Florida Water Management District. And again, just one fact for you before I close, that research does show that one half to three quarters, one half to three quarter inches of water per irrigation zone every 10 to 14 days is sufficient for good growth of grass. So, Mr. Mayor, those are my two comments. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to stand here tonight to bring good news. Is there anything I can take back to the district? Dr. Shortell or our governing board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's a perfect, perfect match for what, for what our needs are because we do have water main breaks and it has increased since I've been on the, on the board and we certainly can use that whole $2 million.
You can't certainly make any promises, but as long as the applications are good and our, our staff likes what we see, our governing board has been very, they follow along staff recommendations, so let's keep our fingers crossed to see good continuing partnerships and programs. So again, thank you very much.
You can take back to them, I, we would like to show them, once we get the projects done, how they look and what we've done with it.
Absolutely.
And, and take them on a tour. The mayor and I, the mayor and I put a good ass on tour.
I can tell you that, I can tell you that Ms. Tucker and Mr. Griffin have beat us to the punch.
Hey, I'm, I'm excited about that because that mean y'all learning. And you still laughing when I did that, but now, it works.
Mr. Troyano, we, we definitely want to thank you for the work that you've done with the city of Palacka. Also, we want to thank the district as well as the district board for the continued partnership. And we also want to give a round of applause to both Mandy Tucker and to, 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 to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tell him to come back, come off.
I'll tell you, he's, he's been coming back and he's been coming off and the numbers have been, and the numbers have been great. And so, we definitely thank you. Next up, Mr. John Newey. Just set your name and address for the record for me.
Yes, my name is John Newey, 8356 Bascom Road, Jacksonville, Florida, 32216. But I do have property in Putnam, Cannon. And I fill out two cards, one for public comment and one for Resolution Number Nine. But I just wanted to take the public comment opportunity to address, you know, that transmittal, you know, on page 317, you know, I'll have copies for you, you know, when it comes up. But tourism and the objective, support the growth of the city and county as an ecotourism, heritage tourism destination. Then policy 1.14.1, continue to support and promote fishing tournaments. Policy 1.14.3, support public and/or private water taxis that connect the Riverfront Park with the Murray Island for hikers and for campers. And then policy 1.14.4, work with the Chamber and the Tourist Development Council, promote the city's historic natural and cultural resources. Now, the reason, I just wanted to share something with you. You know, back in 2012, you know, they had the Bass Master Relief and, you know, I got a little vacation idol and I'm with the TDC and Shaw Grigsby and Paul Elias, you know, he's in the Hall of Fame, and they just stayed at my place. But, but now with Hurricane Irma, you know, I've got a lot of damage going on and, so anyway, you know, I'm looking just to kind of switch gears, if you will. And, you know, and here's just a picture of Shaw and, you know, and, you know, and it was just very positive. So what I'm hoping and maybe coming to understand is that, you know, there's two different areas. So you all are within the city on this Resolution Number Nine and maybe it's, you know, I'm above around St. John's Harbor up in the northern part and maybe that's a different transmittal. I don't know if that's been voted on or not. And there's a couple of other policies that I just wanted to share, but what I just wanted to let you know, you know, going forward and is the support of tourism. I mean, and it's, it's a huge economic driver. And if I'm addressing the wrong body, again, I apologize, looking for some guidance with this. But anyway, I just want to take the public comment period and just highlight the tourism part and I'll just look for the public hearing on Resolution Number Nine.
Your concerns are duly noted and you are in the right place.
Okay, well, thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, I spoke with a gentleman and before the meeting, before the meeting resumed and explained to him that our comprehensive plan does not cover his property. That's what he asked about, being in the right place. I explained to him that the county's comprehensive plan would actually cover his property, but he was certainly welcome to have input into the city's comprehensive plan if he liked. The comments were timely about tourism as well.
And then Mayor, you might need to tell him which, if you've got tourism going here. The tournaments are still coming, the bike, they had hundreds of bikers through here, bar two trail people had, Regional Planning Council had folks coming through, so it's not that we aren't pushing it and working with the Chamber, whoever else we need to do it because that's a focus for us too.
Um, is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close for the comment. Given the agenda, adopt resolution, under consent agenda, we're going to adopt, under item A, adopt Resolution 2017-1311, authorizing the renewal of employment assistance contract, DAP benefits contract with Vanessa Townsend and Associates for one year, terms beginning Adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-12, authorizing nominal lease renewals effective January 1st, 2018. Keep putting it beautiful, lease on the office space at 205 North Second Street, Palacka Art Lee, lease on the Tillman House. See, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-13, author of execution of Amendment Number One to the agreement with Community Champions Corporation, extending the agreement for management of the city's vacant foreclosed abandoned properties program for one year term. Assigning said agreement to the property registration champion, my time's up, PRC LLC, a wholly owned subsidiary of CCC. The bell is off. E, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-14, authorizing execution of St. John's River Water Management District fiscal year 2018, cost share grant agreement number 32348, in the amount of $1,109,220 for the Palacka Reclaim Water Main Extension Project. E, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-15, authorize execution of change order number two.
E, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-15, authorize execution of change order number 2 with Southeastern Klein Construction Incorporated, in amount of $0 for field changes, and change order number 3, and a deductive change order, $37,633.63 for direct purchase of construction materials for Book of Park Stormwater Improvements Project. F, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-16, authorizing execution of the deductive change order with Kirk's Construction Incorporated, in amount of $112,911.45 for the historic district's portable water main project. Continuing on. G, Resolution Number 2017-13-17, authorizing mayor and city clerk executing assessed heirs and associates engineering scope and fee agreement, in amount not to exceed $56,105 from Palatka Heights Portable Water Main Improvement Project. H, adopt Resolution Number 2017-13-18, amending fiscal year 2017-18 tax increment fund budget per 1211-17 recommendations of CRA. I, adopt Resolution 2017-13-19, amending the membership of the Palatka Community Redevelopment Agency regarding the Putnam County Board and County Commission Representative per CRA recommendation. J, appoint Carol T. Ross and Ann Keyes to the Palatka Children Enforcement Board as alternate member for three years, to expire September 2020 and September 2021, respectively classifying Chris Hollister from a member with architectural experience to a member with subcontract experience, and to extend his appointment until September 2020, and reclassify Ontario Smith from alternate member to member with architectural experiences. Reappoint Laura... K, reappoint Lars Skornberg and Linda Crable to the Stormwater Preservation Board as alternate and member with real estate experience, respectively, for three-year terms, expiring 2020 of September. I, I'm sorry, L, reappoint Blanche Rogers, Eddie Collins, and Cleveland Hobson to the Board of Zoning and Appeals for five-year terms, to expire July 2022. M, Citizens Read advisory Task Force, CATF, fiscal year 2017, Small City CDBG Application Cycle, appoint Frank Bates as a regular member, and reclassify Elektra Kitchens as an alternate member. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be removed?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve. By Commissioner Campbell, and second by Commissioner DeBoerum. Any discussion?
Questions?
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. At this time, I won't read all of that. Number four, is request to authorize execution of the Palatka Housing Authority annual forms determination of exemptions and categorical exclusions, 24 CRF, 58.34 subpar N A and 58.35 per N B, on behalf of the Palatka Housing Authority, site improvement fiscal year 2018 through 2022, CFP AMP forms and certified KHA plans, consistency with the city of Palatka's comprehensive consolidated plan. John Nelson, Executive Director, PHA. John Nelson, would you like to come forward at this time?
John Nelson, Palatka Housing Authority, 400 North 15th Street. Annually, the Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the Palatka Housing Authority and every other housing authority in the country to submit an annual plan and a five-year plan for their review and approval. This year, we're assuming the plan. We have no new construction, so no real controversial objects in our plan, and we're asking that the City Commission approve our annual plan and the proposed five-year plan.
Any questions for the commission?
I don't know. We're getting ready to talk about our comprehensive plan and do some upgrading to it. Do we do that before we do whatever workshop or whatever we're doing on our comprehensive plan? We don't know what changes need to be made, because they don't need any changes in the comprehensive.
We haven't, based upon where we are, there hasn't been consideration for every item that's on this agenda as to where they're placed. And Mr. Nelson's proposal is not contradicting anything that we have in place.
Okay, so if we look at the plan and want to make changes on it, and look at our housing plan, when is that done? Does that tell us?
It's a continuing... Our comp plan is going to be a moving document that continues to change over time, so at all times, we have the opportunity to do that. Again, with what the housing authority is asking for, this plan pretty much is straightforward. There is nothing that's contrary to what we've passed in the past. They're not even asking to build anything additional this year. And so the plan is pretty consistent. It'll be consistent with both any amendments that have been proposed thus far, as well as anything else. Is that correct, Mr. Crowe?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is it just this year or within the next five?
That's what I'm...
I read your memo that to mean that they don't propose to build any within... You said the timeframe, so I read that to mean five, five years.
That's my understanding. That's correct. We have no plans to construct anything within the next five years.
Just for clarification.
Again, even though the plan is still a moving document on an annual basis, it has to be continued. And so with that, do we have any further questions?
Motion.
Motion approved.
There's a motion. My first, the board, and second, my Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion on the motion?
Questions?
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Good to see you guys here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Number five, proposal location for clubhouse facility to assist persons with mental difficulties at 521 Unit B, South 13th Street, cooperative lease agreement with the Palatka Duplicate Bridge Club, concurrent nominal lease tenant. Mr. Holmes, you want to take the floor?
My understanding that the... Currently, we have a nominal lease with the Bridge Club, nominal lease meaning they pay a dollar a year, I believe, for the facility that's located there on Krill, I guess. My understanding... My understanding that the... Their club has entered into negotiations or discussions with the applicants for the facility to address some mental health issues, and that the Bridge Club is agreeable to sharing their location, which I'm told they don't use for a large part of the week or month. And so you're looking for what amounts to a sharing of that facility with, I assume, almost akin to a sublet... Subletting of the portion you're going to use by the Bridge Club.
Goodbye, May. Ellen Scherf.
What's your comment?
We were over there Monday and had discussion with the Bridge Club.
And you're to that tonight, the Northern Bridge Club?
No, I believe Adrian Bradley's out of town till Friday, so... But, and you can confirm this with him, but what they and I decided would be that if we took the lead on the lease and let them have it a day a week, Monday, this is the only day of the week they use it, that would allow them to get back some of the water money that they put up for collateral to keep the thing going, and we would be using it six days a week. And the other fact is, we're a 501(c)(3) company, which allows us to apply for a lot more grants than the Bridge Club would be willing to do.
Since it's one location, the water bill would be in whichever entity. Yeah. It would be up to them on how they want it.
And Dr. Trump, you'd also have the appropriate insurance as in place.
Absolutely.
And for the record, will you state what the purpose of your facility would be? Obviously, as I guess you know already, for us to grant a nominal or almost no-pay lease, there has to be a public purpose that is served by the facility that we grant the privilege to, because we're essentially taking property owned by the city and giving it to a group for their use, which is taxpayer property, and the law and the Attorney General opinions are pretty specific that we have to be careful in making certain that anybody that we benefit in that regard serves a public purpose, a purpose that's available to us and that serves the general community. So for record, can you just state what you're going to be doing there?
Sir, we're going to have a clubhouse for mentally challenged people, not... They have to come in with a mental diagnosis. We will find out who their doctors are, whether they're getting medication or not, whether they're getting therapy or not, whether they've had disability applied for it or not, and we will provide those things. We'll also assist them in any other matters that they have going on with them. As a tradition, people with mental illnesses generally have a lot of legal and other community difficulties, so we'll try to help them through. And we will be open from 9 to 3, six days a week. We don't want to have them out there at night. We want them moving out during the day.
I got a question.
I have a question. Can you tell?
But you said, they're diagnosed and they are... They come to your facility for a... Specifically, what type of...
Basically, to get services that they're not getting elsewhere. The applications for social security disability, working with the Palatka Housing Authority to get them Section 8 housing if they qualify, if they're not too far. Also, to give them a place to get out of the line of fire, because they get out there in the street, and they get out, and people bounce into them, and next thing you know, they're in the backseat of a squad car. And that's chewing up a lot of money for us to be policing these things. And if we can keep them close by and work in their behalf, I think we'll have less recidivism and less problems on the street with them.
How can we measure that?
Like myself.
Well, I'm just saying, well, how would we know?
We ask the Chief Shaw, and we ask Sheriff for Roche to keep statistics on the amount of mental health patients they have arrested. They know.
And would it be on referral basis from the doctors?
No, anybody can walk in. If you think you have a mental problem, you can walk in. We don't want to get into that referral conundrum where everybody has to be sent by somebody else.
You need to refer, how many are successful.
Right. Based on the number of referrals and the result of the referral, not necessarily who got referred, because we don't need to know the names of the people for...
You wouldn't, because of HIPAA.
Have you had a conversation with Heart of Putnam? And is there... Bridge Club is separated from where we are in the building?
Yeah.
And there are no... What's the Heart of Putnam position?
I think it's only six days a week. We're only open two days a week. It's not going to really impact us a lot.
If you'll recall, and I'm not throwing rocks at this, but if you'll recall, when we considered the Heart of Putnam, there were a lot of the neighbors in the area who came and were concerned about traffic and safety and activity. And I'm not trying to voice an opinion one way or the other, but now you're going to have three uses there instead of two. And theoretically, this use is a six-day-a-week use. Nine to three?
Nine to three.
Just, you know, I want to ask some questions about that.
We tried to put several things that... We tried to put Price Martin Center there, and it was a bunch of stuff about, there's a lot of traffic going through there. And then they had those folks, they had some of them living in the James Hotel, and they were... We tried to get us to being a tourist place, and having folks that have problems walking around sometimes causes conflict.
Well, as they're walking around, there's...
They didn't walk here. I know, but they did not want the Heart of Putnam. This place was good to keep the Heart of Putnam. We kind of bit the bullet with them, because they weren't there but a very, very few days and everything.
Let me refer you to the current problems.
It needs to be some other location other than that.
Let me refer to the problems the city of St. Augustine is having with their street people. We can avoid that by having the clubhouse, to a great extent, because they will come there rather than be out in the street. How do I know that? I used to live on the street.
Okay.
I spent two years on the street.
But also, out there by the college, they had those...
One second. Before you address that one, let me give Mr. Crowe up to get his comment right quick. I'll come back in a second.
Mr. Mayor, thanks for providing, Director. I just want to clarify, I have discussed with the applicants the zoning issues. It was represented to me by the clerk, and it was a clubhouse. Now, this is a residential zoning district. It's very important to note that the conditional use applied to the food pantry. There were public hearings of the planning board. In this case, if it was anything but a place where people meet and socialize and maybe have group activities, there cannot be any intake, there cannot be referrals, there cannot be anything that an office or a medical facility would do. That is not allowed by the zoning. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
So, we're not doing any of that, so...
One second. Commissioner Campbell. I just want to say, we've made a commitment to help. I'm all for the help. I mean, I don't think anywhere that we give someone, everyone would be completely happy with that kind of facility coming in. But we do have a commitment to take care of all the citizens of Palatka. And with that being said, we have to do what we have to do. Some of the tough decisions that we've made, we've made them. So, I mean, we have to do what we have to do.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's a gathering spot. There's gathering spots all over the city of Palatka. It's... I mean, I don't think it's going to take away from tourism. I don't think it's going to take away from any of those things. We have to do what we have to do. Now, if it's not properly zoned, or we can't do that kind of stuff, then that's where we have to come in and make a determination. But I don't... I mean, we have to do what we have to do, because we made that commitment.
Well, have they talked to the county? It is the county's responsibility legally to take care of everything and mental health. And they have more properties than we do. And I was told, I call it the Putnam House out there, they call it something else. There are two buildings out there that have meeting rooms and kitchens and everything else sitting out there. And I think the county needs to take some responsibility for where we're going to have these people. They have caused... They have caused problems, and I'm not for helping people, but some of those folks have caused problems when they were out there.
Some of what folks?
People who have mental problems.
There are people who have mental problems that you don't even know have mental problems.
I know. I understand that, but there are others, too, that are there that... That are out there and cause a conflict or cause trouble.
We have community meetings each week. Monday mornings, we have community meetings.
I think the comments that I'm hearing... I'll say this, and I won't really bite my tongue a whole lot. I think the comments that are being made leads us to all lend an opportunity to be further educated on what's in place and what mental illness it does.
Thank you.
I also think... I also think what you're thinking, I also think that there needs to be a more concrete plan put in place so that we can determine if it truly meets all of the zoning requirements, if there's a need for variance, if there's a need for something else to be put in place before final decisions can be made. I think it's... I don't think it's lost on anybody on this commission at all, that, you know, we're going to help every denominator of this community in whatever way possible, but we want to do so within the confines of what we have to work with. We want to make sure that we're doing it and being good partners, both to you, particularly since this is a joint Tennessee of sorts, concurrent Tennessee, where we've got... We've got the Heart of Putnam and as well as the Bridge Club. We want to make sure that we have all that stuff in place. We want to make sure that all the i's and all the t's are dotted, but I also think it's a great opportunity, and that's the reason that the task force is put in place, to educate the people. Because I can tell you, past experience, I worked a case concerning bipolar disorder schizophrenia, where the judge actually indicated to us in another county that he suffered from bipolar disorder schizophrenia, and you couldn't look at it and tell.
Until that.
And the thing we got to understand is, you don't know who needs support somewhere, or you don't know when it's going to be your turn. And we've got to be conscious of our citizenry, our commission, of everybody casting aspersions when we may not necessarily understand all that goes with it. People did not want the Heart of Putnam to be in the same building. There hasn't been any problems. People come, they eat, they leave, they're happy, it's fine. And so, and you've got a committed group of individuals who work that system. And so, for all the folks who said they didn't want it, and they felt like there was going to be an increase of crime and all this other stuff in the community. Chief, have we seen that? You get calls, but you...
Not to that extent.
Not to the extent that there's a problem, a major problem that needs a major adjustment, but we've seen... But we've seen, but there, but again, we are dealing with people who need help. So we, we can pass it to the county, but if we don't address it today or tomorrow, I can guarantee you that you're going to address it. I've seen other communities that are having to address these issues. And, and they're addressing them. It's been a lot of money dealing with them. And so, sometimes the city's got to take the lead on some stuff. That's just my thought. Commissioner, um, Castle.
Well, I just absolutely agree with what Commissioner Campbell said. We've, we've made a commitment, and we need to do what we can as a commission, move forward and try to help as much as we can, and not pass the buck off to, to the county, and see if we can become partners and help them proceed with this process.
Yeah, we're in a unique situation. We, we all supported it to this point. And we've identified a location.
Just remember, there's a difference between the legitimacy and validity of a purpose and the location that purpose is served.
Yes.
It's called land use. My only point is, I'm not making any comment about the purpose that this group is trying to serve. I'm simply suggesting that we had to, we did a conditional use for the food pantry. Conditional use being, they had to apply, they had to provide a plan complete with numbers of hours of operation, trips, suspected trips per day, all those sorts of things. And the surrounding neighbors got to come and say yes or no. Most of them said no, and it was finally approved. I shouldn't say most because I didn't take account. So all I'm asking is, if the planning director says that from what he's heard of issues, if he's heard enough, and I, I don't know that he has, in terms of the specificity of the plan that they have, is it properly zoned and residential? That's my only question.
So I think, just to kind of bring everything, because all of us, we have general concern. And it's only a proposed location. And I think that we are doing absolutely everything that we can. If we can't do it, what can we do? And I think that's what we, we come to the conclusion, or at least I come to the conclusion of what we've talked about. So, is there a way that we can, I guess, I don't want to use, for lack of better words, table this discussion until we've had the vetting out process to where we know the, the full out use of what the facility is going to entail, if it's approved by, or once Mr. Crow does what he does with his, his work and his investigation skills. Once all of that has come, and we see that it can or cannot, and then we come up with a solution to where, okay, we want to take the lead, so then we go to the county and say, what can you do? We've done absolutely everything that I can. So now we're passing the ball to you in hopes of you helping the cities, I mean, the citizens of not only Putnam, I mean, the city of Palatka, but Putnam County. Where we are right now is, I think, this creates an excellent opportunity for Mr. Crow to gain additional information, because gain additional information adds to the details of the usage, to make sure that it complies with the zoning, that there are no additional concerns from the existing tenants, and that we are doing everything according to our own plans. And once that's done, Mr. Trigger's correct me if I'm wrong, if all that stuff is in place based upon the, the desires of the commission as a whole, a resolution would be set forth similar to the one that's coming in the next agenda item, memorializing that particular agreement.
The city attorney could put a lease agreement together.
And to make sure we address all the land use concerns that would be in place as well as making sure whatever here, whatever, anything else are in place to deal with those issues. The, at this, I mean, I think the one thing we have to do at this time is give some direction to staff as to what we want done from the, at this point.
Mayor, can I, can I, um?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Has the Bridge Club asked for renewal of that date? When did they ask for it?
Well, we met with them on Monday. And actually, I spoke with them about a month ago when all of this came down and we were, staff was directed to try to help locate a place for this clubhouse. We, I spoke with them about a month ago, asked them if they intended to renew. They said that they did. They, I then spoke with them about the possibility of co-locating, because I know that they have difficulty meeting their obligations on keeping the center. They're in there about four or five hours a week on Mondays. And so, they, they kind of welcomed the opportunity.
Their lease expires, I'm advised December thirty-one.
Right.
Don't we traditionally require written application or request for lease renewal?
No.
Nominal lease renewal even?
We don't require an application. We just renew them if they want them renewed. And they come to the commission in the form of a lease with a resolution stating they're renewed. The only time that we really kind of take what might be an application is if the tenant changes.
Is the Bridge Club lease scheduled as an agenda for renewal?
No.
No, just the Harder Putnam.
That's also addressed in this agenda item. We, some years, we renew it in January, some years, we renew it in December. It'll come back in January. So, but it will, you know.
Okay, so that brings up another, a whole different issue, because if we know that these kind of things are coming up, there should not, we should not be to the point to where we have something coming to an end that we don't have a place or a vote to put on them. So, that's a whole separate issue that we need to address, because this is not the first time that that has happened. That's why we, as, that's, I don't know if it's the day-to-day operations, but when those kind of things are coming up, that should be communicated far enough in advance. Like, if that, that's not acceptable, that's a whole different issue. We're, we're, we're dealing with that issue right now. But what, what are we going to do?
We need to table. I believe we need to table this meeting because we're not in a position to vote on based on the current contract in place that has not been completely expired and about to be renewed.
What we've asked before is like a month.
I mean, we are.
On the Bridge Club, normally, they all four come in at once, and we consider all four of them at one time.
Listen, listen, listen. That's, that's, we're getting, we're getting way off base, but I think it is necessary that we start to have lease renewals come in at least two months before.
Absolutely.
Time, so that just in case something comes up, at least two months, at least sixty days in advance, or ninety days in advance, so that we can make determinations that there's going to be a renewal of how that's, how that takes place, so that we don't find ourselves having to call a special meeting or go in something different or to get that done. But we just got to give direction on this issue. If, if it's the pleasure of the commission to consider the location, then it goes to the planning department to have additional communications as it relates to what's going on. And Mr. Crow could bring us a report back as to whether it needs to go to the planning board, or if it, or if it complies and doesn't need any further action, and he can get with counsel, and we can get that flexed. So, without delaying this long agenda that we have today, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, before he makes the motion, can I say?
He put thirty seconds.
Okay. I, I have sat on the drug and alcohol abuse and mental health boards for twenty-seven years. And we had a homeless shelter and all that. And when we put those kind of things in our neighborhood, they have an impact on them. What I want to say, if you're going to go ahead and you can make a motion to let that, look at it, and figure out if that'll be a good location for a plant. Because I get tired of seeing us get something in a location to help somebody, and by the time they get up and get running, then the community comes up and, and wants to move, or gives them such a hard time, they can't function.
That's all.
Ms. Brown, I appreciate that, but it's not in a neighborhood in the same sense that you want to say it's a neighborhood, because to the right of it is a storage center. In front of it is the lodge, or to the left of it is the women's club. There's not many residential uses attached to it. There's a park in front of it. So it's not like you're in a neighborhood with a resident sitting right beside it. That particular portion of Thirteenth Street doesn't really have a whole bunch of houses until you go two blocks down the road. And if you turn, if you turn right, you're going to be at Matthew's Moving and Storage. So it's more industrial than anything else in that area. And we just got to stop saying it's a neighborhood, because it ain't.
Zone residential.
It's zone residential, which leads us to an opportunity to look at the comp plan and figure out if something needs to change.
People are hurting.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this as a proposed location with giving Mr. Crow the authority to do all of the gathering of the information that is required with this proposed location, and then bring us back the report of if it needs to come directly to us, or if it needs to go to the planning board, so that we can further take this item up and come up to a, come up with a resolution holistically.
Second.
So basically, if Mr. Crow reviews the plan that Mr. Sharp has, and finds that the activities that are planned fit under the current zoning classification of residential, then you're saying it, you're moving to approve.
Yes.
And if he finds that their proposed activities don't fit in the residential category, then either they curtail some of those activities, or they apply for conditional use if one's allowable for their activities that they want. Is that what you're asking?
A little, a little limit, and see if the county has something.
We got that motion on the floor.
Second.
In a second. Quickly, as we discuss, is that any concerns with counsel as to the motion? No. Any concerns with the commission? Anything we need to discuss?
I'm happy with it.
Call a question. All the papers say aye. I'm totally motion here in the end. This is, this is the first step.
I know.
It's a spirited debate on something I didn't think was going to take this long. But it's glad that we have passion, and we are looking at every consideration on this issue. Again, we thank you guys for taking the lead. And we're going to move this agenda. I can promise you.
Okay.
We're going to move on to item six, resolution authorizing renewal of the Harder Putnam Food Pantry lease for a portion of five twenty-one A Thirteenth Street, overbuilding effective one one twenty eighteen, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, five-year term, per grant requirement. We discussed this at the last meeting. Will you please read the resolution?
Commissioner.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing the renewal and execution of a nominal lease agreement with Harder Putnam Food Pantry for a portion of five twenty-one South Thirteenth Street and providing lease terms.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor in a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner, Mr. Castle. Is there? All the papers, anybody, you got a regular question?
No, I'm just, no, I'm.
Hold on.
Yeah, I got you. Just think, it's always.
All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Great job. Thank you. Glad to hear you speak today.
Thank you very much.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
This is the longest I've ever heard him talk. Item seven, resolution authorize execution of a wind-down agreement with American Traffic Systems, ATS, to provide the orderly wind-down of the city's red light camera agreement.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test of wind-down agreement with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated to provide for the orderly wind-down of the City of Palatka red light camera program, effective December thirteenth, two thousand seventeen.
So move.
Just before, we, we got a motion on the floor in a second. As we go into discussion, just to real�tive a couple of things.
Mayor, commissioners, I just wanted to briefly discuss this, and Chief Shaw can add to it as well. But this agreement is for, basically, the, the wind-down procedures for the red light camera program. I believe the agreement specifies that the cameras will go offline on December thirteenth.
That's correct. They went offline yesterday.
Yes.
It was two thousand seventeen.
And that this, this agreement will go through March, I believe, March thirteenth?
That's correct.
March thirteenth. And what ATS will be doing is, they will continue doing the administration of any tickets that were in the pipeline up until yesterday. They'll handle the taking of the payments, all of those issues, because if we don't execute the agreement, then they would basically give us all of that data, and the police department and other staff would handle everything from here on out to finish out the program. And I, I think it would be in the best interest to have ATS continue doing the administration of the program until the end of this agreement date.
Twelve thousand five hundred.
Twelve thousand five hundred a month, which is, we're currently paying anywhere between twenty-two, twenty-four a month.
Can you give us another discount? We got it. They want the ATS here.
No.
It's due March thirteenth.
Is that what the chief wants done?
That's correct. That is my recommendation as well.
Okay. So you're not ready to do that paperwork?
We don't have enough staff to be able to handle that paperwork, sir.
You want to do it in the run of the queue?
No, sir. I, I, I don't have time to do it.
All right, good for the discussion for the commission. Mr., before we call a question, Mr. Holmes, you've had an opportunity to review the contract. Any concerns?
No, I think it's probably the only practical way for us to move at this point. Otherwise, we're going to duck them with a boatload of tickets and work that they're really not in a position to do. We met with the city manager, Shaw, Chief Shaw, and Jonathan, they all met, and it looks like they're going to go together. It's probably a break-even proposition anyway, isn't it?
That's correct. We've put in place already, we expected a wind-down period. So we, in, but during the budget time, we put it in place to be able to make sure we took care of this period. And then the tickets that we occurred, approved, up until the thirteenth, will basically take care of those fees that we're going to get from that portion.
Maybe a little bit more. Possible. Possible.
Do you have a question?
I'll be thirty-seven five.
Yes, ma'am. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
That's quiet. Oppose. Most carries unanimously, quiet. Thank you, sir. Item number eight on the agenda, public hearing for the purposes of input concerning the construction of a new lift station and sanitary force main to replace and abandon the damaged main hall at the end of First Street, resolution authorize execution of a scope and fee agreement with Ayers and Associates not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for downtown street lift station project engineering.
Commissioner.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test Ayers Associates engineering services scope and fee agreement in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for engineering, design, and permitting for the downtown street lift station project.
So move.
Second. Got a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open to the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close public hearing. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Question's called. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. 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 Griffin. Moving on to item nine, the agenda of public hearing, resolution transmitting the evaluation of the appraisal report here for the Palatka Comprehensive Plan to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, and stating the intent of the commission to amend the comprehensive plan based upon recommendations contained in the report in accordance with Section one sixty-three, point thirty-one ninety-one Florida statutes. Can you read the, can you read the resolution first?
Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida, adopting the evaluation and appraisal report for the Palatka Comprehensive Plan, stating the intent of the City Commission to amend the comprehensive plan based upon recommendations contained in the report, and approving, transmitting of the report to the Department of Economic Opportunity in accordance with Section one sixty-three, point three one nine one Florida statutes.
So move.
Second. Motion on the floor in a second, Mr. Crow.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Thad, for Prime Director, this is a large-scale plan amendment. We don't often do these, but submitting the comprehensive plan mapped for the property to the west and south of the wastewater treatment plant into the ag category. We have the ag for culture, land use category. We don't really utilize it because we are a city after all, but we have that category, and it does allow activities like what is proposed. and it does allow activities like what is proposed. Planning Board did recommend, uh, transmittal.
We're only here.
I'm sorry. Okay, let me start over.
Number nine.
Yes, um, this is similar, this is a large scale amendment, it's a very large scale amendment because essentially we're revising the entire comprehensive plan. Our plan is out of date in terms of the data analysis, in terms of, uh, the policies, the goals, objectives and policies. Uh, this is work that we had picked up after it's been really frankly sitting around. We did extensive, uh, public hearings back in, uh, 2008, '09, and even 2010. The final year was prepared, uh, in 2011. The state then changed the rules, um, so that we didn't have to transmit until actually 2015. We are a little behind schedule, uh, but we are, uh, catching up to where we need to be. There's an awful lot of information. I hope that you have not spent an awful lot of time looking at it because you've got time. Essentially, we are sending it to the state agencies for review. Uh, within thirty to sixty days, we will hear back to see if the agencies have any, um, comments on areas of critical, uh, regional or state concern. At that point in time, we go through the process all over again because the planning board, and then it comes to you for adoption of the comprehensive plan. So it might be something you kind of want to dip into slowly so you don't get too overwhelmed. And if you like it, uh, when it comes back, I can kind of give you a little guided tour through PowerPoint or whatever.
Usually takes about a hundred and eighty days to get to the, to the final?
It's actually, it's more expedited than it used to be because we get it back in more than two months from, from DEO and then the ball's in our court. It can move it at the pace we want it to move in.
And this, this motion or resolution is for transmittal, correct?
Correct.
Transmittal meaning we're sending it to the state?
You're not committing to anything in it, you're just sending it to be looked at.
If we do it ourselves, instead of hiring somebody to do it.
You're looking at, you're looking at the consultant right here.
Because they had regional planning councils do it for us for years and then they told us it wasn't right. They told us. Some of the other folks said, oh, that wasn't a good thing. And they were the ones that had done it, so.
We've done, the changes have been in, we've been working with all the departments and getting information from everyone, so.
Thank you. We've got one speaker card. Uh, Mr. Newey? Can do a selfie and keep it for.
There's, uh, one for each of you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You can just share that one if that's all right. All right, uh, my name's John Noonie. Eighty-three fifty-six Baskin Road, Jacksonville, Florida, three two two one six. You know, I, I use public comments to talk about tourism. Now, I just wanted to, uh, and this document is over three hundred pages. And so, you know, tourism, you know, that was on the bottom, page three hundred and seventeen. But here's the one that really concerns me, it's page ninety-one, Policy A1, three point four. The city shall not issue variances, special use permits, building permits, or zoning changes in any case where the proposed land use is not consistent with the city of Palatka adopted comprehensive plan. And again, when I'm thinking of this, uh, you know, uh, like I said, going forward, what I would like to do or see more of, and that's working with the ADA, the Americans with Disability Act. It's federally mandated. So you're sending this off, so in other words, if I, and I'm not a, a not-for-profit, you know, and just joke to your public that just wants to build an ADA, um, vacation round. You know, I shared with you, you know, the success I had early on, but going forward, you know, this, uh, when I read this, the city shall not, substitute shall not for may or could. Because when I first, the first I issue variances, you know, the first variance I think about is an extra wide sidewalk. You know, a perimeter around, you know, for the wheelchair accessibility. And we're not just talking old, young, you know, and this is economic development. And so this is a transmittal. This will come back. And if I'm not in the proper, you know, if, uh, again, and this is where you can help me, you know, with I guess the county commissioner or just within the city. So if I'm not able to do it out there, then if you change the wording to may or could on page ninety-one policy on that policy, then I just think you're telling the state of Florida, you're telling everybody, especially, you know, uh, you know, and that's just one example, I'm just trying to share insight with you. So, um, be willing to answer any questions? And, and the way I'm, all, all of a sudden, I just have this feeling where if I can't, I don't know if the county commissioners have voted on this.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty, okay. Um, so anyway, I guess what I'm coming to realize, maybe there's two opportunities. There's one in the city of, uh, of Palatka here or outside into the county area. But hopefully one or the other will have that inclusion in that policy. Okay, well, thank you for listening.
I'll let council address.
The passage you cited is nothing more than a recitation of state law. State law requires that any zoning approval that we make, whether it be variance, conditional use, rezoning, it has to comply with our comprehensive plan. So there's nothing there that really, we have discretion about state law requires our comprehensive plan to be matched by or to be consistent with any zoning or land use decision that we made. You may be a bit, um, may not understand completely the terminology or the concepts at issue. Um, there's nothing there that, that in any way, shape, or form says that we, that, that people in construction don't have to observe ADA requirements, nothing there at all. Our comprehensive plan, in fact, provides that ADA requirements would be met. Um, so, and, and then also finally, the city's comprehensive plan is not going to have a thing to do with what you do on Cedar Creek or, where did you say you were?
Uh, around.
Boswick?
Yes.
I promise you, our comprehensive plan won't impact things, okay? It can extend to Boswick. That's going to be the county's comprehensive plan.
And has that been transmitted to the state?
I honestly don't know. I honestly don't know.
Okay, and thank you for listening.
Yes, sir, thank you. Then no other speaker cards. Any more comments from the board? Questions called, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, most in here unanimously. Yes, sir. Um, yeah, Mr. Crowe, when are we going to transmit, um, the report?
Essentially, I have about two weeks to transmit it.
Can we, you meet with us after we leave today?
Sure.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten, public hearing on transmittal of large scale land use map amendment, DCA two thirty-seven point four-five, three hundred and thirty-seven point forty-five acres off Brown Landing Road North and West City of Palatka Wastewater Treatment Plant. Planning Board recommendation to amend future use, future land use map and element from agricultural to other public facility in city of Palatka as the applicable. With this bumper job, a couple of quick items.
Leaving a, a project out of the airport this evening. Matter of fact, they're cleaning up some construction equipment right now. We repainted both runways and we, uh, striped, uh, taxi lanes that go to the hangars.
Well, how'd you paint them?
They look, they look good. (laughing). And, uh, we also refurbished some pavement of the hangars on the west end, so that pavement should last a number of years more. So it needed to happen and it finished up tonight.
Uh, another thing, uh, we're in the fundraising process for our fly-in, eighth annual, uh, communal house fly-in on January twenty-eighth. And, uh, I'll let you know the fundraising is going very good. Uh, businesses in town are really stepping up. And I wanted to petition all of the commissioners. And there's fundraising, we've had a good, uh, response from, uh, the law firms in town. And I want to petition the commissioners. If you know of any of the law firms in town that might be interested in contributing, uh, to this event, please call me at the airport.
I'll be in second room, Mr. Young.
And, you've already got his permit.
I'll leave you with that, sir.
He didn't hit me. He never asked me.
I was going to tell you that I took the invitations, both to Senator Nelson's office and the old.
Oh, good. So you, a quick question, what would it take for us to partner with the school district for an opportunity to propose an aeronautical program for this issue?
Oh, amazing.
That's just, that's a rhetorical question. You can talk to Commissioner Campbell, anyone else about that.
Don't worry, we've already started that conversation. It's going to be a part of the twenty-first century.
So, we appreciate that information.
I thought the Boy Scouts would get ready to do that. Aren't the Boy Scouts, didn't they come wanting to do that?
Uh, there's a program, there's a Boy Scout program.
I didn't realize, I didn't realize we were talking about it, but.
Say that, we need to have a conversation.
But that'd be great, that'd be great. Maybe right after the, the fly-in. Usually generates some energy.
I've seen it done in other communities in the district, moving towards, uh, having more, um, you know, more specialized programs as well, so.
These programs have, uh, southeast to here, but we should have some.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thirty seconds is up. Uh, Mr., Ms. Grifters?
Everybody?
Mr. Holmes?
Nothing.
Ms. Tucker?
Nothing.
Merry Christmas. Ms. Robinson snuggled out?
She hadn't even been.
Yeah, she hasn't.
Mr. Reynolds?
Couple of quick things. Um, inspections are underway with the county. Um, it's been going for almost a week now and, um, I think it's going well. Um, going to be working with the county administrator on setting up that joint city-county, uh, meeting in January to get back on track with, uh, the items we discussed last time. Um, working on getting options and data for, um, the workshop that we discussed at the last meeting regarding the Public Works Building. We want to have all of the information and data that we can so that when we have that workshop, we can present that to the commission. And, um, kind of ties into the money that we got from the water management district earlier. Um, Mrs. Tucker and, uh, Mr. Griffith are working on an application for six million dollars in state revolving fund monies for, uh, water line replacements. And we're kind of planning to try to phase that in over time, uh, so that we can, uh, six million? So that we can leverage, um, that money against, um, some of the other grant money that we're looking at getting like the money from the water management district. So good, good things on the horizon. So that's all we have. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Good job. Mr. Ward?
All right, just want to let everybody know that this Saturday, they're going to be having a, uh, a drive out at the, um, four hundred, um, North Fifteenth Street is Palatka Housing Authority. They trying to help people restore their rights, say yes to second chances. So, uh, for the people who have committed, um, committed nonviolent crimes and they would like to have, help them to get their, restore their rights so completely. So that's what they're going to be doing on Saturday from twelve to four. And if you'd like to come out and enjoy, maybe you can have a hot dog or coke or whatever and maybe sign a petition if you're in Putten County.
Florida's only one of two states in the country that, that did not have automatic restoration of rights for nonviolent criminal.
That's all I have. And, um, well, Merry Christmas to everybody and just, that, that wraps up. Wraps it up for me.
Put your glasses on to see the sun?
Yes, sir. Reading glasses.
He had the reading glasses. Just Merry Christmas to everyone and thanks to the city police department for our personalized Yeti cup. Thank you.
Thank you.
And gifts to Ms. Brown. Thanks too. She gave. Excuse me?
Two polo.
Wait a minute, was that last Christmas?
No, we're just. You sure? Mr. Campbell?
Um, just real quick, in keeping up with tradition, I'm quite sure the fire hydrant outside of police department could be the first taste of guarded and gold.
What tradition?
The, the tradition has been, the team that wins out of University of Florida as, uh, and Florida State, they get to decorate the fire hydrant outside of the fire station. If you don't believe me, I do have record from the last time, which was two years ago, that we did it and I think, again, it's due for an update or.
We have a Public Works requisition.
Don't worry about that. I, I, I come painted myself.
You have a system about you painting, right?
We don't, we don't have anybody that can touch some colors on.
Don't worry, me, uh, attorney Holmes, myself, we'll make sure.
Okay, we got, we got plenty of paper.
Don't worry, we'll get, we'll get it done.
Once we get started, though, we may have stopped the fire hydrant and everything.
We will. I will not interrupt that motion.
I'm going, I'm going to take my camera.
Mr. Sluggs, he offered you the opportunity to say something and you neglected, so he's not decided to do so.
Kelly just feel that.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas to everyone of, uh, our citizens in the state. And we'll be getting back to you about the fire hydrant because again, it needs a fresh coat of paint.
That's why they're red. I can't make this up, though.
I know you can. This is better than a sitcom.
It is today. Vice Mayor.
I just would like to thank all of our employees, all our staff for the wonderful work they have done this, this year. A lot of people don't know how much you all do and a lot of it's done without anybody asking you to do it. Like the, that's the fire department, what they came up with toys. And I want our citizens to know sometimes they need to look at all the goodies you do other than sitting up here or sitting in our desk or sitting in a truck. And I want to thank the police department for my gift and I hope you have a Merry Christmas.
Mayor, anything?
Um, as you can see, it's actually happy time for all of us. Um, and I, I think that's because we're seeing progress in our community and we're seeing growth. I mean, growth doesn't come without its own set of challenges. Um, but it's the holiday season, it's a time for us really to be thankful for all that we have because we never know where we're going to be in a situation that others are in. Uh, and just to be grateful, uh, in a small community, we've got to be grateful but cohesive too. Uh, it's time for us to truly love our neighbors, to build this community up. I want to thank Mr. Reynolds, uh, Mr. Grifters and everyone, uh, for the work, for the work that they've done, uh, with the enhancements to City Hall and the continuation of that. But I also want to just thank, uh, this commission as a whole for the work that you guys do. And I know often many times you hear complaints, you know, that's true here, uh, thank you, but your efforts don't go unnoticed in this community. The work that you do doesn't go unnoticed. Um, we are, our representation in Florida League of Cities, uh, is second to none in the organizations and the committees. Uh, and I think communities outside of Palatka are recognizing, um, leadership in this community and we're, we're moving forward. And, uh, enough can't be said about the staff of this community and the citizens who sit through these meetings, who communicate with us on a regular basis and who don't give up on us. And so we definitely thank, it's good, it's always good to see Ms. Kitchens, it's good to see, uh, Mr. Chutres, uh, it's good to see Ms. Joseph, Ms. Goyard in here. Uh, it's just an awesome time. So, uh, it's the holiday season and again, we're moving forward and we're going to write our own story.
I like that.